Good evening and welcome to the December 13, 2021 work session of the Mayor and City Council. Tonight, we have four discussion topics. We're going to be receiving updates from several of our committees. But before we start with that, I want to make an announcement that we will just a reminder, we do not have a work session or another meeting this month on December 20th through December 27th due to the holidays. So the next regular meeting of Mayor Council will be on Monday, January 3rd, 2022. And with that, our first committee update tonight is from the Economic and Business Development Committee. And to give the presentation on behalf of the committees, Barbara Cruz, our good friend, and we have Tom Monergan Seager, our staff liaison assistant city manager here as well. So Barbara, take it away.
Well, actually, I'll get her started there, Mr. Mayor. A good evening to you and members of the council. I, along with Sharon Disch, have had the pleasure of serving as staff liaisons to the Economic and Business Development Committee for many years, actually, since I first got here. And before we begin, I wanted to thank and express my appreciation to the volunteers of this committee for their hard work and for sharing their time and expertise with us tonight is Barbara Cruz, one of those terrific volunteers who's here to tell you a bit about the committee's good works over the past year. So Barbara, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I believe there's a presentation that'll show with us. Okay. So, thank you. We can move on to the next slide, please. And we'll start our briefing with just a little update. You'll see on the screen a list of the members of the committee. And just as an update, Don Fatsy has recently retired. And he has retired from his work position as well as from his position on the committee. So one of the first orders of business for us as a committee in 2022 will be to elect a new chairman. Just a few notes about the committee. This is a very longstanding group of volunteers. Many have been on the committee for a number of years, and you probably know them from a lot of different interactions throughout the community. In talking with staff, there is a potential for one to two seats available on our committee. And Tom and Sharon will lead the program through the process to begin sourcing and looking for a new member. We can move on to the next slide, please. And as committee members, we have some guiding principles that lead us through the discussion and the items that come before us. First and foremost, the city needs are right on the top of our list. And we look to programs that will provide the resources to achieve the vision of the city, to pay for services and programs and assure diversity of employment opportunities. And some of the key approaches you'll see on the screen, we focus on retaining businesses currently in the city and helping them grow and prosper. We look to attract new businesses and expanding industries that provide stable, well-paying jobs. And we work as outreach and ombudsman in this role to build strong relationships with businesses and other economic development groups that are currently in the county. Next slide, please. And we highlight the strengths and address the challenges that the city faces and the community at large faces. So some of the strengths that the city brings that, you know, are highlighted in all of the opportunities that are brought before the committee. We focus on the well-educated workforce, our strategic location, our public transit options, local incentives, and municipal zoning and in-house permitting and inspections. And then we face challenges, just as everyone has through COVID and ongoing in the community. But the soft office market, the dwindling lab space and inventory has been quite a topic of conversation. The Frederick Avenue corridor and Old Town, our suburban image, and the competing priorities between historic preservation and affordable housing. And if we'll go to the next slide, I can, I will give you just a little update of some of the topics that the committee addressed throughout this year. So we started off 2021 as we do each year with a breakfast. And it's for committee members and elected officials invited guests. And this year, Secretary Schultz from the Maryland Department of Commerce updated the committee, and she provided comments on the efforts being undertaken by the Department of Commerce to help support the state's business community during the height of COVID pandemic and its associated shutdowns. She engaged, we engaged in a robust question and answer session with committee members and elected officials. This was again in January of last year, so everyone's outlook was a little different than it is today. Then we moved on. The next topic we addressed was the redevelopment of the Kimco Gaithersburg Shopping Center. And that's right at 355 and Travis Avenue. And as you may know, Kimco is proposing to construct a higher density project on the site with a mix of apartments in retail. And the committee members, we appreciated the presentation as well as the presenter's consideration of our feedback. They were very open to committee thoughts, staff thoughts, and interested in making sure that before they came before they came to the mayor and council that they had really addressed some issues that were brought before them. Then we moved into a hot topic, the Lake Forest Mall Master Plan Amendment. And we, this was really one of the biggest and most important activities undertaken by the city in 2021. And we, as a committee, all took part in the planning staff, in the committee and the presentations that the planning staff pulled together. And it was really well done, well thought out. And obviously, as we moved forward, there were lots of questions, lots of comments. And, you know, we know that this will be a topic that will continue into 2022 and beyond. We can move to the next slide, please. And the Montgomery County Building Energy Performance Standards. This was brought to us, the Department of Environmental Protection from Montgomery County came and presented to the committee. And it was a little bit of, we had to do some work to get through this one. But in short, this bill that is being proposed will modify the county's current benchmark law to include additional county-owned properties, commercial properties, and expand to include multifamily buildings to meet the long-term energy performance standards. A second public hearing on this bill was held on December 9th, where the Transportation and Environment Committee members received an update from county staff on the status of an independent report commissioned by the council. This will help the county set standards for future regulations associated with the Building Energy Performance Standards legislation. And the report is not yet complete, but it should be very soon, and the TNE committee will report back. So we hope to have more information early next year before this bill goes back to the county council for consideration. And then the land development opportunities within the city. This was a very informative presentation put together by Sharon Disch. She created and presented this comprehensive map that outlined virtually every site that's available in the city for commercial development. And I'm not sure if everyone on the council has had a chance to see this and to watch, see Sharon's presentation. But if not, please reach out to Sharon or Tom. It was really comprehensive and really brought up some very nice conversation and thought process that came out of the committee at that one. And our last meeting was a project that has generated a lot of attention, particularly by the Old Town community. And the staff and the committee members really appreciated the presentation and the question and answer session that came from the development team. And if we move on to the next slide, please. You'll see some of our 2022 priorities here. And we expect that Lake Forest Mall will continue to be a priority and a conversation topic for our committee. We're looking at infill and redevelopment opportunities along the 355 corridor, the CD Zone Review, Old Town Revitalization, Small Business Outreach, supporting the local biotech and innovation economy, and further diversifying our local economy. And with that, we'll go to the next slide, which that will conclude our committee presentation. But if there's any questions or comments, Tom and I are happy to address.
Barbara, thank you so much for the presentation. And thank you on behalf of the city council and our staff. Thank you and to all your fellow committee members for all the work that you guys put in. This is a great committee. We, some of us are, I know all the meetings are open to the public. So we could technically go to all of them that we want. But I tend to go to the one, you know, the open house breakfast that we have, which is always good. I'm impressed by how thoughtful and how seriously everybody in this group takes the imperative of economic development in the city of Gaithersburg. I think this council has been really receptive to recommendations that have come from the committee. I think you guys have made a big difference, particularly in the last year on your work on Lake Forest Mall, but on other stuff as well. So, so thank you. It's really, it's meaningful. It's important work, and we appreciate it. And with that, I'll open it up to the council for questions or comments. Go to Neil Harris.
All right. Thank you. So I've enjoyed my couple of years as liaison and look forward to continuing this liaison to this committee. I've actually been coming to this committee meetings for at least a year or two longer than I've been on the council. And it's always, as the mayor said, it's a very productive group that and Tom and Sharon's leadership or whatever we call the herding of cats for this group is always welcome because they bring speakers and topics that are always very relevant, and we get great input from this group. I'd also like to give a shout out to Don Fatsy, who is one of the longest standing members. And as Barbara said, recently retired. He always made great contributions, and he will be missed. He leaves a big, I don't know if it's big shoes or a big seat to fill. But like I said, it's a, it's a great group, and I'm sure that Tom and Sharon are busy vetting the hordes of applicants to fill those seats at this point. So thanks to you, Barbara, and thanks to everyone on the committee.
Thank you, Neil.
You know, when Neil says hordes of applicants, he's not, he may think he's kidding. But actually, there's kind of a waiting list to get onto this committee. I know of at least a couple of people who are waiting. So, so anyway, it just goes to show how valuable the committee is and the work that you're doing. Ryan Spiegel.
Thanks, Mayor. There may even be a waiting list among council members to be the liaison to this committee. Not that we don't love all of our committees equally. But, you know, I think the recent history, and by recent, I mean, I don't know, the last 10 years or so, the leadership that the city has shown on economic development, the innovation and creativity that the city has shown compared to many of our peers, particularly in difficult times, going back to the Great Recession. And now all the issues created by COVID and other factors. All along the way, this committee has been such a great partner with city government. It's been a great partner with, obviously, the business community. And, you know, so many of its representatives are from the business community, obviously. And I think that's the reason why people get excited about this committee and why both council members and members of the public want to be a part of it. And you all have really done exceptional work to dig your teeth into complicated issues and really think about the, you know, all the different nuances and all the different impacts and costs of different approaches to economic development and provided us with some really good insight as the city has come to be known for its economic development efforts in no small part through your contributions. So thank you. Keep up the good work. I am optimistic about 2022 despite the challenges that we all face. And we just really appreciate the good work. I'll echo what Neil said about Don as well. I am a former liaison to this committee and had the opportunity to work with him and other members of the committee as well and wish him the best. And I'm sure you will find good folks to continue to serve on that committee. But thank you very much, Barbara, and everybody who's on the committee now for all your good work.
Thank you, Ryan. Anyone? Jim McNulty, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you so much, Barbara, to you and to the committee for all the work that you have done. I think I'm speaking for myself and Councilmember Henderson when I say I don't think there's been a conversation that we've had in the last six months leading up to the election that did not involve economic development, Lake Forest, and/or Old Town. So thank you so much for all the work that the committee has done. Having been involved with the Old Town Advisory Committee, which is part of economic development, I've seen firsthand the work that Tom and Sharon do, and thank you to them as well. You know, going forward, having, you know, just approved the NovaVax campus last week and looking forward to the opportunities, you know, there are so, it was the mayor that has been saying, you know, it shows that the, that the industry and the economy, people are bullish on Gaithersburg. And the waiting list, I think, bears that out as well. So keep up the great work. You know, keep finding us opportunities to be able to talk about fun things. And we look forward to seeing you again here next year and talking about all the amazing things that have happened in 2022.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? Before we go, we'll go to Lisa.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Barbara, for the presentation. And I also want to extend the thank you of taking this extremely complicated and complex realm of issues and concerns and strategies and putting it in such a format. It's easy for a new council person, I'll speak for me and likely for Jim as well, to get overwhelmed with the newness of it all. And when it comes to economic and business development, you guys put it in such a way, you presume in such a way that it's just understandable and palpable with everything else that's going on. So I want to extend my thank you for that to putting me in a situation where I can understand what I need to pay attention to, what I need to vote on, what I need to ask questions about. So thank you both for that and the rest of the committee for that. And I'm looking forward to 2022 and all the things that we're, that's going on and things that we are going to achieve. So I'm excited. I'm excited that you guys are on the team to lead us through it. So thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. I want to give anybody in the public a chance to comment on this if they wish. Just use the Zoom raise hand function. I don't, I don't think, looking at the public we have in the attendee room tonight, I think everybody knows the deal here about how to use the Zoom raise hand to speak if they like. Is there any, anyone who'd like to speak on this topic? Who wants to go in twice? Okay. I don't see anybody, so we'll move on to our next agenda item. But I want to say thank you to, once again, to Barbara and to Tom for a great presentation, for the great work.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right. So tech team, if you could bring up Shelley Williams, our Division Chief Cultural Arts, Cultural Events and Services, and John Moragello from our Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, he's representing the committee tonight. And as John and Shelley come on to the Zoom, I just, I just want to note that for those of you who don't know, John runs the Best Medicine Rep troupe that has a theater space right now at Lake Forest Mall on the first floor. I went to see a production they did just this past Saturday. It was hilarious. Laughter is indeed the best medicine. It was great. Really enjoyed it. John and Shelley, I'll turn it over to you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I wanted to say hello. Oh, sorry, John. I'm just going to say a quick little hello. And then I'm going to let you take it away. We're very happy to be here this evening to give you a look back over the last year to tell you what the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee has been doing. Lots and lots of very interesting things are happening. And as Judd said, John, our chair will take it over and off you go, John.
Great. Thank you very much, Shelley. Good evening, Mayor Ashman, council members, new council members Henderson and McNulty, and Ms. Bryle and Ms. Board. My name is John Moragello. I am the Chair of the Gaithersburg Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, or CAAC. I am also, as the mayor said, the President and Artistic Director of Best Medicine Rep, a nonprofit professional theater company that specializes in new comedies and operates from a storefront at Lake Forest Mall. I'm delighted to be here tonight to update you on the accomplishments and activities of the CAAC. The committee is comprised of nine members who are drawn from the community and represent. Are we seeing the slides showing? There they are. Wonderful. The committee is comprised of nine members who are drawn from the community and represent, as you can see from this slide, a range of cultural arts interests and experiences. The committee ensures that the city is meeting the goals stated in the Cultural Arts Section of the city's master plan. And it provides guidance on the city's cultural arts facilities and programs, including art in public places. Last year, three members, Reynaldo Rojas, Loretto McNally, and Jim Rolfs, who have contributed much to Gaithersburg's dynamic cultural community, rotated off the committee at the end of their terms. Reynaldo and Jim agreed to continue their participation as members of the Art in Public Places review panels when convened. We welcomed Cassandra Redding, an arts educator and artistic director of Montgomery Playhouse, Maritza Suarez Valenti, a visual artist and resident artist at the Arts Barn, Anne Calicia Thorpe Price, a theater artist and Maryland director for the Teaching Artists of the Mid-Atlantic. It is the mission of CAAC to advise the mayor, the council, and city staff on cultural programs and facilities in order to enhance the quality of life in Gaithersburg, to develop and support opportunities that allow artistic expression and creative excellence to flourish, and to reflect the city's pride and commitment to the diversity and inclusion of its people. Our members added that final phrase to our mission last year to clearly state our position on the importance of equity, inclusion, and diversity in all we do.
John, just a quick note. Yeah, I was probably, Shelley, I'm probably going to say the same thing. Tech team, if you can hit the next slide, please. You just go to, make sure you tell the tech team to advance.
Wonderful. Thank you. So let's go on to the next slide, please. Last December, when we presented to this body, you gave us avenues to explore. I'm pleased to update you tonight on our support for the Lake Forest Mall redevelopment plans, our outreach to other city committees, our exploration of Gaithersburg history, and the first community mural program. Next slide, please. Best Medicine Rep Theater Company has rented space at Lake Forest Mall for the past five years. So participating in the Lake Forest Mall project was of special interest to me. Several committee members have long hoped that Lake Forest Mall might someday include an arts venue. And with that in mind, we participated in the survey and meetings. When the master plan was adopted in August of this year, it was gratifying to see that the voices of arts and culture had been heard. Included in the plan is the following statement. "A primary goal of the Lake Forest Mall redevelopment is to provide ample amenity space for residents and visitors," specifically referring to performance venues in the next sentence, and saying that amenity spaces should not be an afterthought, but should be treated as an essential component of the overall development. That is something which this committee supports wholeheartedly. Such a performance venue could also include shared community space for senior, adult, and youth arts classes. Research has shown that the arts add vibrancy to a community, generating an economic return for surrounding businesses and help to foster a unique sense of place. Next slide, please. Last year, former council member and long esteemed liaison Mike Sesma advised us to explore synergies with other committees to identify opportunities and prevent duplication of services and activities. In pursuit of that, the CAAC met with two other city committees, the Old Town Advisory Committee and the Multicultural Affairs Committee. Next slide, please. In meeting with OTAC, we were pleased to learn that both committees view public art projects and city special events as important ways to connect, transform, and grow Old Town. By creating a lively place for cultural arts and events, businesses will flourish. Residents will again, will gain a sense of pride. Negative perceptions about Old Town can be changed, and mark riders will disembark to spend a little time and a little money in Old Town, thus fueling economic growth. The insights and goals of OTAC are clearly important to the work of CAAC and will be checking in with OTAC during the coming year. The work of the Multicultural Affairs Committee, or MAC, clearly overlaps with CAAC in the support and promotion of the community's diverse artistic and heritage expressions. For both committees, art and culture are a way to build and unify our community while addressing issues of racism and intolerance. Together, MAC programs and programs under the aegis of the CAAC celebrate diversity and introduce residents and visitors to new ways of experiencing the world. Next slide, please. Council members urged the CAAC to work with staff and G-Park to explore new ways to engage with Gaithersburg history. Suggestions included historic markers on trails and around the city. In response, staff and G-Park began looking at the stories to be told and how to share them. The first step is to research our past. To that end, the Community Museum has initiated Gaithersburg History Research Project in fiscal year '22 and '23. Staff are contracting with a noted historian of local black history to conduct original research. In years to come, the stories of other non-white communities who have made Gaithersburg home will also be told. While the research is ongoing, staff will explore different interpretive modalities from the traditional history signs you see in this slide to audio tours and other forms of digital storytelling that will serve our multilingual and multi-generational community. Next slide, please. I'm excited to say that the seedlings we planted over the past few years are finally bearing fruit. The city received a $5,000 planning grant from the Maryland State Arts Council to underwrite the development of a community mural project. This planning grant will provide financial resources to support a robust, community engagement process with residents of Old Town and the selected artists, Daniel Katz Hernandez and Mary Weiss Waldhorn. On the slide is an example of a mural Daniel painted in Prince George's County. Together, Daniel and Mary will lead three workshops with youth, seniors, businesses, and residents to inform the development of a mural in the Father Cuddy Underpass, representing the unique character, history, and values of Old Town. The mural is scheduled for completion in this fiscal year. Next slide, please. Some of the highlights of the Art in Public Places program include refurbishing the eight bronzes in the Celebracion installation at the Rio by artist and conservator Jay Hall Carpenter. The sculptures were moved from their original location near Uncle Julio's to a waterfront location in the new Active Lifestyle and Family area. The city also contracted with a well-known public art consultant to jumpstart several important projects, including developing a strategy to work with Maryland Department of Transportation on the Gateway to Gaithersburg project at I-370 Shady Grove Road and 355, and the Community Mural Project at the Father Cuddy Underpass. The consultant also guided staff in the development of a city-owned art collection that will be exhibited at the new municipal building at 16 South Summit Avenue when it opens in February 2022. Next slide, please. In closing, the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee has five strategic goals for 2022. Number one, support the city equity initiatives in every way possible, from recruiting committee members to ensuring equity in the public art program and other city arts and cultural programs. Two, monitor and guide the Art in Public Places program by serving as reviewers for projects and making recommendations to staff and developers. Three, advocate for the cultural arts goals presented in the master plan. Four, liaise with G-Park and other city committees to expand outreach and service to the community. Five, be the city's eyes and ears in the community to identify and report on arts and cultural trends, needs, and opportunities. Six, foster engagement at every level. And seven, welcome a new council liaison to our committee later in the year. Thank you for your attention. We would be happy to answer any questions.
John, thank you so much for a great presentation. We're about to take the suspense out of who's going to be the next council liaison. But, but I just want to say, as I've said many, many, many times, and Neil and Ryan are sick of hearing me say this, and Jim and Lisa will be sick of me saying it later. And that is, you know, city is just streets and addresses without a culture. And that's, that is what makes, that is what makes us distinctive and it's important work. And I think in a lot of cases, arts and culture are undervalued. And I don't want us to do that. I've never, I've always wanted us to place substantial value on arts and culture in the city of Gaithersburg because it is, it is what's, you know, what people will think of, what they'll associate us with. So thank you for leading, leading us in this important work. And go ahead, John.
Yeah, if I could just, you know, add to something that you said earlier, Mr. Mayor, when you came to see the show. Something that you did not mention is that we had a talk back with Emmy winner Ken Levine, who used to write for Mash and Cheers and
we had a talk back with Emmy winner Ken Levine, who used to write for Mash and Cheers and Frasier. He flew in from Los Angeles to come to the show, and Mayor Ashman was there. And it was his very first time in Gaithersburg. He knew Washington, he knew Baltimore. He'd never been to Gaithersburg, and as we were driving from Lake Forest Mall to the Kentlands, he was seeing all of the tech, the biotech companies. It was like, what city is this? And I was like, it's time you learn who we are.
I love that story, and it was, it was great to meet him, and, you know, he wrote a brilliant play. It was, as I said, it was hilarious. It's done, that, the run is done, right? That, that was the last weekend for that play?
Yeah, our, our next show is in February. Yeah, it's called The Trip, Woman by, written by a woman named Crystal Rhodes.
Okay, well, we're gonna try to keep people posted on that. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass it on to the, to the next, before I get to you, Ryan, the next council liaison to the committee, and that is Jim McNulty.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, John and Shelley. I am so excited to be working with you all. The, the theater and art is very near and dear to my heart. I did musical theater in high school. I did theater as an activity in college. I miss being on stage, but I've always kind of preferred being behind the scenes, so it will be really exciting to be working there. And actually, I have a high school senior who is actively applying to design schools right now, so this is very much in my wheelhouse. I very much enjoyed when I was with OTAC in welcoming CAAC and having that joint meeting. And 100% agree that the goals of the committees are very much aligned in the future of Old Town, and and I will be the liaison to both of those committees, so I look forward to being able to work together with both committees towards everybody's shared goal, which is a vibrant Old Town that people want to spend time in, to hang out with, to borrow a line from the campaign to take selfies in. So we are very excited to work with you. Thank you for everything that you do and the forward-looking vision that the community, that the committee is taking, looking ahead to the new police and city council chambers and, and looking at the overpass coming into Old Town and, and coming in from 355 and, and, you know, using that creativity to just make people's stay and their visit more enjoyable. I 100% agree with the mayor. You know, adding that level of culture and that personality makes a city special. And I've said, since I've moved here, I've lived in Rockville, I've lived in Germantown. Gaithersburg was just right. There is a unique personality that the city of Gaithersburg has, and I think that is reflected in the, in the culture, in the arts that we espouse here. We have wonderful programs, and I appreciate all the work that, that you all do to furthering that mission. And I'm incredibly excited to, to be a part of it over the, the next year.
We look forward to working with you.
Excellent. Thank you, Jim. We're gonna go to Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember McNulty, I've got good news for you. If you missed being on stage, now that you have joined our city council, you're gonna be on stage a lot. So first, let me just say to John, I always enjoy your presentations, not only for their substance, but you have the best radio voice in the business, my friend. And you make it a pleasure to listen to your presentations as well. You know, the mayor talked about always having a long tradition of appreciation for the cultural arts here in Gaithersburg as a differentiator, and I think that's true. But I think perhaps there has arisen a newfound appreciation for cultural arts in the last couple of years as we've all been stuck at home and tried to find ways, usually outdoors, but sometimes in a hybrid environment, to enjoy the opportunities for cultural arts gathering that are available to us right in our backyards, right here in our neighborhoods in Gaithersburg. A newfound appreciation for all of the resources and the opportunities that are here and the new creative ways that our staff and our volunteers and all of the institutions of our city and our partners around the city have undertaken to engage members of the public on cultural arts in performances, whether it's on Zoom or in person. So I think it's a, it's an opportunity to take a very challenging time and use it in an optimistic way to grow our appreciation for cultural arts, and I think you've done just that, so thank you. I also really wanna salute the committee's embrace and real leadership of the topic of racial justice and equity and adding DEI language to your mission statement. I think that's very much in line with the resolution and the other policy statements that our mayor and council have made in the last couple of years, and frankly, even at times before that, as well as the action plan that we've approved for staff to implement, which is, you know, underway, and it's gonna take a long time, and it's gonna be continuous work, but it really has to permeate all areas of what we do, you know, because equity and social justice isn't just about economic development. It isn't just about education. It isn't just about housing. It's about everything. And cultural arts is an important piece of that, and the opportunities that we provide to people, and the way that we reflect culture of our residents in our art is also very important. So I wanna salute you all for doing that and being so explicit about it. And I'm really glad to see the discussion of the exploration of the city's history in your presentation as well. As you all know, some time ago, I kind of put out the suggestion that as we were struggling with names of places around the city and the history associated with some of those names, I wanted us to do something proactive as well, to put our history in contacts, context, the good and the bad. And we had talked a little bit about some sort of self-guided walking tour with markers, particularly to address the names of streets where there might be some association between the namesake of the street and enslavement. And I'm really glad to see that our staff and our community museum are undertaking that project, which is again, going to be a long deliberative process with community and public input. But your committee is going to play a key and leading role in that effort as we decide how to roll out the best way to educate and provide context for those important historical events. So thank you for being at the forefront of that as well. I'm really looking forward to seeing the outcomes of it, but I understand that research is going to take a couple of years, as you mentioned in your presentation, because we wanna get it right, and that takes a little bit of time, but wanna make sure the public knows we are already doing this and working on it, and that the CAAC, the staff, the researchers that we've brought in, the Community Museum staff and others involved are already working on this. And so I just wanna say thank you for that, and I look forward to seeing ultimately what comes of it, and we stand ready to assist. So thank you again.
Thank you, Ryan. Anything from any other council members before we go to the public? Not seeing any hands go up. I will make it open to the public if anybody'd like to speak on this topic. I see one hand. Tech team, if you could bring up Mike Sesma, please. And Mike, you know the rules. State your name, address, or neighborhood. This is, it's so awkward saying this to Mike Sesma. State your name, address, or neighborhood, and go right ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Mike Sesma. I live in the West Riding neighborhood. And I, I am watching the meeting tonight because, because I was very interested in the report from the CAAC. Because in my former role, which I recently retired from, I was a liaison to this committee as a member of the city council, so worked with the committee for a number of years. I just wanna thank John and Shelley for pulling together a great report. It's a terrific committee. There's a lot of talent and wisdom, and vision, and creativity talked about at those meetings, and I think you saw that in that presentation. I'm very excited about a number of the projects that are moving forward, especially the mural project and the entrance to the city projects, which I think will be very important. But one of the things that John talked about in the report was the synergy of the work of this committee with other committees. And we, before this report, we heard the report from the committee, the Economic Development and Business Development Committee. And I think, you know, one of the things that, as, as the mayor and my former colleagues have pointed out, you know, creating a culture that creates a sense of place and perhaps the, a sense of a destination for people to visit has a lot to do with our cultural arts and, and such. So I think one of the synergistic interactions that I would urge the council to pursue and this committee to pursue is to have a regular, perhaps an annual meeting with each of the committees, because there is a lot of overlap between the, the charge and the mission of each of the committees that, that reports to the council. So certainly, meeting with a committee on, and economic and business development would probably a good place to start. I would also remind the council that, remember, every development project, whether it's new development or redevelopment or infill, has a public art requirement. So that's always part of development and economic development and growth of the city. So one of the best ways we can improve our businesses in the city and make, create opportunities for them is to create, was, is to provide an opportunity to create a destination, make the city a destination for people who wanna use those businesses as well. So thank you very much for the opportunity, and congratulations to councilmember McNulty for becoming the new liaison to the CAAC. You're gonna enjoy that quite a bit, Jim, and I know you're already enjoying being on stage on a weekly basis anyway. Thanks very much, and thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much, Mike. Do we have any other speakers from the public on this topic? Well, once, going twice, okay. Not seeing any. John, thank you. Thank you very much. And our next, our next topic, we were, we're keeping Shelley with us. John, we're saying goodnight to you. Thank, thank you very much, and please convey our appreciation to all of your fellow committee members. The next presentation we have is from G-Park, and if we could bring up Mary Phaly, that would be great.
So for our newest council members, just a very quick little thing about Gaithersburg Parks Arts and Recreation Corporation. This is a 501(c)(3) that's associated with the city. It seeks to support parks, arts and culture, and recreation. It is not a grant-making entity. It's a grant-seeking entity. So some, for instance, my division might wanna seek a grant in order to help support, you know, an exhibition in the city. But it does not give out grants, so some, oftentimes, people get a little confused about that, and I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. But our chairperson, Mary Phaly, is here, one of Gaithersburg's biggest rah 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 boosters, and she's going to talk a little bit about what we've been doing this year. Thanks, Mary.
Yeah, thank you, Shelley. So give a little bit of context here. Yes, good evening. I am Mary Phaly, and I certainly wanna say thank you all. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Ashman and council members, and new council members, Henderson and McNulty. It's exciting to have you there. And yes, hello to Ms. Bryley and Ms. Board. I'm served as the chair of the Gaithersburg Parks Arts and Rec- Parks Arts and Recreation Corporation Board, which we call G-Park. And I think we wanna get that first slide up. Great. Hold on a sec here. One moment, please. All right. So, um, I've been involved, as Shelley gave me a nice shout-out, but I've been involved in many, many different community groups. But this has been an exceptionally rewarding year with G-Park. I've mentioned last year that in June of 2020, the board discussed the role that G-Park would take during the COVID pandemic. Even with the pandemic, or perhaps due to the pandemic, G-Park was able to inspire people to get outside, gather safely, and explore the city parks. I'm delighted to be here tonight to update you on those accomplishments and the activities of G-Park. Next page, please. So here's our mission statement. It's to support the parks, arts, and recreation, and we're supporting new and mature parks, arts and culture, and recreation initiatives in the city. We engage public and private partnerships to promote awareness of the city's resources, and we raise resources from volunteers to business sponsors to fundraising efforts. Next slide, please. Our membership, we're led, we're, G-Park is led by a governing board that advises three special interest groups, which we refer to as alliances. Each alliance includes one or more governing board members. This last year, this eight-person board was led by myself, Mary Phaly is the chairperson, and included three alliance chairs. We have Denise Kaiser, who's the chair of the Alliance for Arts and Culture. Denise joined the board in June of, January of 2021. We have Tracy Rulo, who is the chair of the Alliance for Parks, the Parks, and Bridget Rider chairs the Alliance for Recreation. Richard Stang of Dillion and Stang is CPAs, served as a treasurer and is an at-large board member. We also had Oscar Alvaranga, formerly of Montgomery County Public Schools, PTA, but now he's with Cross Community, a nonprofit that exists to advance equity and racial reconciliation in Montgomery County. We have Stuart Barr of Lurch Early and Brewer, attorneys at law, and we have Mike Corus of Astrosenica. He's the Senior Director of Safety, Health, and Environment and Sustainability at Astrosenica. The G-Park board members bring a wealth of business, education, community-building, nonprofit management, volunteerism, environmental, social equity, arts, and recreational expertise to the table. Next play, next slide, please. So what do we do? What does G-Park do? Everything G-Park does is guided by the parks, art, by the parks' recreation and cultural element of the city's master plan. Let me try that again. Everything we do is guided by the parks' recreation and culture element of the city's master plan. It grows capacity. G-Park enhances civic participation. G-Park streamlines efforts, and G-Park sustains resources. So what does this all really mean? As you will hear tonight, it means G-Park stimulates interest in the city. G-Park builds community, and G-Park encourages participation in and stewardship of the arts, parks, and recreational resources of Gaithersburg. This last year, G-Park board and alliances achieved many accomplishments, beginning with, the next page, next slide, please. We've, we've got our establishes, a presence in the, press, our, here's our presence in the community. We have a new social media platform. At G-Park, a logo was developed by Denise Kaiser and has been used to effectively build G-Park's brand and strengthen our presence both online and in the community. The board develops specific social media guidelines following the example of the city, and we've established a G-Park page on the city's website and created Facebook and Instagram accounts. Next slide, please. Using our social media accounts to promote awareness of G-Park, all three alliances rallied around the COVID-friendly initiative we call Explore Gaithersburg. The goal of this program was simple, to help citizens to find, connect, and be a friend of one of the city's greatest resources, our parks. Make sure here. Next slide, please. There we go. Great. Over the last year, Explore Gaithersburg has brought businesses and community members together to enjoy nature, the arts, and recreation through parks, through park cleanup days and painting meetups at Bora Park and trail mapping with identification of points of interest. On a very cold Martin Luther King Day in January 2021, approximately 50 volunteers came out to Bora Park to map points of interest throughout the park. Over 400 points of interest were collected. And then at our first park cleanup on April 10th, in celebration of Earth Green Month, approximately 50 students and adult volunteers picked up trash along the Muddy Branch Stream in Morris Park. Among the volunteers were 10 members of the Muddy Branch Starbucks store. They brought muscle and energy for the cleanup, as well as coffee, water, and pastries for all the volunteers. Starbucks has been a consistent partner for the G-Park events. Next slide, please. So more time was out in nature, that more time out in nature was an unexpected benefit of COVID-19. The Alliance for Parks encouraged people of all ages to get outside, and this is our, our year review, if you will, of each of the The Alliance for Parks encouraged people of all ages to get outside. And this is our our year review, if you will, of each of the alliances. Um. So we got every, as I said, the part it, the Alliance for Parks was getting people outside and explore what was going on. We mentioned the trail, the trail mapping of Morrison Borah Parks, as you talked about. The exploration of Rosemont Valley Stream Park where staff explored Rosemont Valley Stream and determined that a serious trail development project was needed. And look at the next page. Next slide, there we go. The Alliance for the Arts and Culture brought the community together with social distancing outdoor experiences, including four artist meetups and. Uh, including at Borah Park. The Storm Drain Art Contest and Paintout Day, held in partnership with the city's Storm Water Management Project. Use the arts to bring attention to the importance of protecting the Chesapeake Bay watershed. The competition was open to artists of all ages. Members for the local artist artistic community reviewed the submissions and chose five designs that were painted by artists and volunteers on five. Five storm drain covers at Borah Park at Summer Hall Farm. And the alliance is focused on the arts and city parks. Um, it was here, this focus on the arts and city parks inspired the arts barn staff to love this, to develop a new take on Shakespeare in the Park. A concept calling Walking with Shakespeare. Held at Observatory Park, theater companies set up six mini stages along the trails and performed Shakespearean love scenes as patrons strolled along the trails. Next slide, please. For the Alliance for Recreation in March of 2021, debate, the Benjamin Gaither Center Funding Committee was established. Seeking to raise funds to assist the city in funding capital projects that enhance and refurbish the Benjamin Gaither Center and to raise funds to assist in providing financial assistance to to low income seniors. The Alliance supported the trail ma- mapping project on April 10th by engaging students from the high school study bubbles and testing that. GIS mapping methods on walks in Borah and Observatory Parks. Promoting trail mapping opportunities to city youth participants and youth opportunities coalition partners. The next slide, please. So in addition to program successes, G Park completed an important administrative task, including becoming officially established as a federal tax exempt organization with the IRS and the state of Maryland. The new name and the new officers were authorized by Citibank and the name and contract information changes were made by. SEMA, the our directors insurance and Incorp are registered uh registered resident agent service. Next slide, please. So our financial accomplishments, despite the impact of COVID-19, G Park's fundraising efforts continued. We we collected close to oh uh nearly $40,000 in donations, including but not limited to the 39,000, I'm sorry, 19,250 for the virtual Gaithersburg Book Book Festival. The Arts Barn received. Two thousand one hundred and fifty-one in memorial gifts and another 400 from the Kettlin's 5K for the Arts Barn Scholarship Fund. The Community Museum received a thousand dollar donation and the Alliance for Recreation received 200 unrestricted gift. The Gaithersburg Corus received no donations this year, but used its resources to contract with. Guest musicians and sound engineers to produce holiday and spring recordings that were offered free on the city's social media channels. In the next slide, please. In closing, uh, G Park has the following goals for 2022. We want to expand our governance board. We want to expand the alliance memberships and friends groups. We're building on a uh building more on the fiscal 20 fiscal year 21 programming. With exact exciting new projects. We're going to create a G Park website that can accept donations. And then we've been developing governing board subcommittees. Uh, we've got marketing and promotions. We have nominated and we have finance. And then we have a committee called Grant Review and Acceptance. Speaking of these committees, I'd like to ask Stuart, who is the new chair of our new nominating committee, because he did. If he could be brought in into this conversation, because he'd like to say a few words.
Hi, thank you, Mary. Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Stuart Barr with the governing board of G Park, and I also want to offer just a quick congratulations to the two new council members. Thank you very much for serving. And we really look forward to working with you. Uh, Mary did want me to take just a couple of minutes at the end of her presentation, since I coordinate the G Park nominating committee. So you've heard now about G Park and the wonderful work that it does, and we don't want to miss any opportunities to. Promote awareness and how to get involved in G Park. And I personally look at G Park as like a booster shot in the arm for the city's parks, arts and recreation. And who doesn't like parks, arts and recreation? It's about as mom and apple pie as it comes. And picking up on the discussion from the last presentation. It's things like that that convert cities like ours to really special places to live and raise families. So we want to make a quick plug for uh everyone watching this meeting for how to get involved in G Park if there's interest in doing that. So this is for all the community members. Watching the meeting, the millions of people, in addition to Mike Sesma. And also for the mayor and council members, as all of you are out and about in the community. I'm sure you get questions from residents about how they can get involved. Uh, so please, to the extent you're willing and able, please promote G Park. So. How to get involved? Well, uh, for anyone who's anyone who's interested, please learn about. The organization, uh, spread information and support G Park by word of mouth support and through participation at G Park events. Financial support, of course, always welcome. Uh, anyone can serve on alliances. There are three, as Mary mentioned, parks, arts and recreation alliances. And then also there's the opportunity to serve on the governing board. So. For anyone who's interested, please contact the city or someone who serves already on G Park. Uh, anyone can also, of course, go to the city website, gaithersburgmd.gov and search G Park, get involved. So thank you very much. I think that's two minutes and thanks for keeping G Park on the on the radar screen and moving forward. And I think we're able to take any questions if there are any.
Exactly.
All right. Thank you, Stuart. Thank you, Mary. Appreciate the presentation. And all the work you guys have been doing, getting this thing up to speed and and sort of getting the different. Um endeavors of the of G Park uh going. It's it's great. It's important. I mean, obviously, uh, we just got through talking about cultural arts advisory committee and. How important arts are to creating gate, you know, to, I shouldn't say create, because the the city does have a culture. It does have. Uh, character, but to sort of express it, to to take it from the internal and make it more external for the rest of the world to. Enjoy to the beauty that we do, but it costs money. Unfortunately, these things do cost money and um and it they do. We need patrons. We need supporters in in all kinds of ways. So. This is really important work. Um, because unfortunately, as as Tanisha can attest, our um. Our money is not infinite. It is our resources are limited. So um. So thank you all, and I want to open it up for questions and comments from the council. And and not if I don't see anybody, I okay. Uh, we're gonna go with Neil first and then Ryan. Go ahead, Neil.
All right. So first of all, thanks for the presentation. Thanks for the great work. This is a terrific organization and. Really a stellar group of people working as board members to make things happen. Um, I've participated in the first mapping event, and I thought it was a great event. It was amazing how many people showed up. I honestly felt I needed to do very little mapping because everyone else was doing so much of the work. So it was great. And I think that the the project. Uh, the idea of creating a digital map of all of our trails. In the city so that people with apps can find where they're located. And uh, don't get lost when they're on the trails is is a wonderful thing. And I encourage you to come to continue that effort and. Uh, you know, if you need more help in in mapping and it's less crowded that next day, I'd be happy to help out. But again, thank you for all you do and keep up the good work.
All right. Thank you, Neil. We'll go to Ryan.
Thanks. Uh, I want to echo what Neil said. I was gonna say, uh, this is a powerhouse board. Um, and that's, you know, despite the involvement of Stuart Barr. Just kidding, Stuart. You're part of the powerhouse, my man.
Yes, he is.
And uh, you know, I think, uh, you know, as you're as you're pitching people to get involved in the board and the alliance groups. Uh, you know, I think in addition to the important mission of this organization, which is kind of obvious to all of us. Is also the opportunity to network and learn from. A tremendous uh board with great people who have great experiences, diverse experiences brought to the table. And so I would encourage folks to think about that as another selling point for getting involved in G Park. Um, but um. I I think a lot of the work that you were sort of forced to focus on in the first. You know, months of the reorganization of the group. The slide that talked about all the administrative accomplishments. I mean, they're not necessarily the most exciting things for people. Uh, who are tuning in for the millions of people, Stuart, who are tuning in. Um, but they're really important to kind of lay the groundwork so that you all can do what you need to do going forward. Um, and so I want to sort of salute all of you, salute Mary, and everybody who was involved in kind of doing these things that are, you know. A little bit part of the bureaucracy and the administrative groundwork that needs to be laid in order to be an effective organization going forward. But it seems like you've done a lot of that. And now the exciting part is that you can pivot. And say, all right, we've got all the paperwork done and we can really start focusing on the mission of the organization to to raise that money and to support those programs. And I'm really excited to see. The next steps that are coming forward now that you all have built up the infrastructure that was needed. Um, and as I said before, we're here to support and assist, and we appreciate you being here uh to support and assist uh the city's. Parks, arts and recreation programs. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Anyone else from the council or from staff? Not seeing anybody? Okay. I'll open this up. If there's anybody in the public who'd like to make a comment or ask a question here on this topic. Going once. Going twice. Okay, I don't see anybody from the public. So. Uh, Stuart, Mary, Shelley, we we thank you all very much, and we stand ready to help in whatever ways we can best help and support T Park. Um, we appreciate, as Ryan said, this really is a powerhouse board and. Uh, Stu, I particularly I particularly liked the metaphor of this is a booster shot in the arm uh for the arts. Um, it's really timely, uh, well done with that and. Um, so thank you all. Thank you all very much.
You're welcome. Thank you all for the.
Thanks for the time.
You bet. Okay, tech team, we're gonna move on to the next agenda item, which is our last, which is a presentation for multicultural affairs. Uh, committee. If you could bring up our committee chairperson, Ken Weiss, and our staff liaison, Dorothy Winder, that would be great. And while we're in this transition, I will just note um. That we recently had the Jingle Jubilee event, um, which is something that uh that we all look forward to. I know. Jim and Lisa have been to it before, even though this is the first time they've been as council members, but um. One thing that was different this year with Jingle Jubilee is that there was uh different cultural programming that was suggested by the Multicultural Affairs Committee. And. I'm not sure. If they're bringing that up tonight. I I don't remember seeing it on their slides. Um. So I just wanted to give them a shout out for helping us with that programming. Because I thought I thought it came out great. Dorothy, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, mayor and council members, and hello, Lynn and Tanisha. How are you? I am not gonna slow this down anymore. Let me give it to our chairperson, Ken Weiss, who's gonna tell you about the great MAC and some of our uh accomplishment. Ken, are you? There you are.
Ken, Ken, we can't see you. Looks like we just lost him. Maybe.
Give him a chance to uh try to get back in.
Okay. Well, Dorothy, maybe uh. Maybe you just want to start in the first couple of slides and see if Ken can get back in.
Here he is.
Oh, here we go. Ken, are you with us?
There he is.
Ken, can you hear us? I, Ken. Uh, it looks like he's frozen. Um. So Dorothy, let's let's go back to you, and then when Ken can jump in, he'll he'll jump in.
Okay. Next, the slide, please. Next slide. The mission statement. Um, as you know, that Ken uh was our um. Ken is the chairperson on the Multicultural Affairs Committee, MAC as it's called. Uh, although he doesn't live in Gaithersburg, he has been involved in many other organizations, including Identity, Inc., a young development program and Gaithersburg Rotary, Gaithersburg Creative Writers Group, and for 12 years, the MAC Committee. Uh, he's very passionate about all his residents. Uh, places in the city table the way for the city leaders. In 2017, he was he was a distinguished friend of Gaithersburg. Which was very exciting for him. Um, next slide, please. Okay, oh, go back, please. I'm sorry. Okay, the mission statement. You might ask why MAC exists. The answer is simple. Year after year, Gaithersburg ranked. As one of the most diverse cities in the United States. The 2021 Wallet Hub Report named us the most diverse small city and the sixth in the nation of all cities. As our mission statement says, MAC exists to promote, understand, respect and appreciate of many cultures of Gaithersburg. For more than 32 years, MAC has been dedicated to creating an environment of tolerance, acceptance by representing programs that educate. Create our city's global communities. Through these programs, MAC helped to build bridges between neighbors who often come from versatile, different parts of the world. Next slide, please. Members. In this past year, MAC experienced many changes. In January, the staff liaison, Andy Rosati, who was a great worker, uh, retired from the city. And I, Dorothy Wanda, was appointed in her place. Um, it was some shoes to fill right there. In March, Jose Contralis stepped down as the chairperson and withdrew his membership due to challenges at work. Um. That gave Ken was elected uh in the spring. Um, this summer, we have Anita Cox was appointed by the mayor and city council as a new member of MAC. Anita has a wealthy international experience, including. Running her own non, is Ken back? Own a nonprofit. Um, Papa Cox Foundation. Which helped children in Uganda and build bridges between them and childrens in other areas. The members of the MAC for the past fiscal years, Samira.
North, uh, North, you're doing a great job. Can I take, can I do a few words?
You can take over my my friend.
Well, I knew you could do well, better than me.
No, no, take over with the new members and follow that. Thank you.
Okay, I was just gonna say that our our committee members, I'll start from the bottom, I guess. Maria Spring uh is our expert on Latin America, and she also knows something about. The Native Americans. The Bang Lao is from China, and he's the one we go to for for programming about Asia. Samira Hussein, most people know her, I think, and she works with the Arab and Middle Eastern communities. She's been even on the committee even longer than I than I have. I think she's coming coming up to 15 years. And Washington Sanghu is from the Cameroon. And Washington Sanghu is from Cameroon and is quite knowledgeable about Africa in general. And me, I try to claim I know a little bit about everything, and I wish I really did. And together, we bring a breadth of experience and insight on world cultures. And can we have the next slide, please? MAC, we call it a MAC. We're not a Big Mac, by the way, although we do a lot of things. MAC coordinates with programmers and facility managers of Parks, Recreation and Culture to celebrate the customs, the values, and the traditions of our diverse people and their contributions to our city. With MAC, staff coordinate the presentation of a proclamation for each major heritage month and find a suitable person to accept it. MAC and staff identify and coordinate celebratory social programs on the city's digital channels. And other staff, other city staff augment MAC's work with programs such as Exhibits in the Activity Center, Theater Music and Films in the Arts Barn, Programs in the Benjamin Hather Center, Cooking Classes at Casey Community Center, Historical Programs in the Community Museum, a Children's Storytime Series, and Traditional Arts in Special Events and Standalone Events like the Native American Powwow. Due to COVID restrictions, MAC could not have in-person programs and proclamations were suspended for several months. We focused instead on engaging the community through virtual celebrations. Next slide. Last October, the committee celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month with a virtual cooking demonstration and a Day of the Dead altar. The committee worked with Decoloris, Mexican Folk Dance Company, to build the altar for the third year. It was in the Activity Center and included a traditional altar and educational materials to showcase this traditional Mexican holiday. Many community visitors, many community members viewed the exhibit partly because it took place during early voting. Also, staff produced a video of a cooking demonstration, including Chef Nacho of DMV Empanadas, a restaurant in Old Town. The video included an interview with Chef Nacho and a demonstration of making empanadas. More than 100 people watched it. I personally did not get any of those empanadas, but I've been to DMV. It's a good place. The next slide, please. In February, the city reinstated Heritage Month Proclamations and MAC nominated Byron A. Johns to receive the proclamation. Mr. Johns is a leading advocate for educational equity and is the current Education Chair for the Montgomery County, Maryland branch of the NAACP. The Activity Center Gallery featured an exhibit called Building Bridges: Connecting Our Global Roots and a solo exhibit of the work of well-known black painter Magruder Murray. From February 19th to 28th, the Arts Barn livestreamed the mountaintop, a gripping play that reimagines events the night before the assassination of civil rights leader Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Also, the Community Museum presented a program on Mary Church Terrell, suffragist and founder of the National Council for Colored Women. And the Casey Community Center, the Community Museum, held storytime programs with readings of Stella's Stellar Hair and Ron's Big Mission, the story of black astronaut Ron McNair. And next slide, please. In April, the committee celebrated Arab-American Heritage Month with educational and cultural videos on Facebook. The mayor and city council proclaimed April 2021 as Arab-American Heritage Month. Dr. Deborah Trent accepted the proclamation. She chairs the Montgomery County Office of Community Partnerships Middle Eastern American Advisory Group and is a member of the Arab-American Institute's National Policy Council. Facebook postings appeared throughout the month, highlighting the cultural and literary traditions and achievements of our Arab-American neighbors. The public took a special interest in the video about Ramadan and in the Hema painting demonstration. Next slide, please. In May, MAC helped the city celebrate Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. The month began with presenting a proclamation to Emirates Vicente, Vice President of the Business Banking Division of PNC Bank in this area. And I'll add that at that time, he was also president of the Rotary Club of Gaithersburg. Also, the Activity Center hosted the 21st Annual Exhibit of Harmonious Art, a group of artists working in traditional and contemporary Asian styles. Virtual celebrations on the Special Events Facebook page included facts about Asian-American and Pacific Islander Americans, a map of countries from which they came, and recognition of influential Asian-Americans such as Dr. Peter Tsai, a Taiwanese-American who was instrumental in developing the N95 face mask. I imagine quite a few of us have those. And at the height of the first COVID epidemic, Dr. Tsai was called from retirement to experiment on decontamination and reuse of the masks. Something which, which we were all very careful in the beginning. Now we drop them on the floor and get them up and put them on. Times have changed. Next slide, please. This, due to the pandemic, social distancing and COVID restrictions for in-person events, two of MAC's prominent programs, the Diverse City Showcase and the Social Powwow, were canceled. Additionally, MAC members could not judge entries in the Labor Day Parade as we had done for several years. And next slide, please. On May 26th, MAC and the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee heard a held a joint meeting, which we have already heard about from John Morozjello, to discuss similarities and synergy. And we talked about how both committees advocate for cultural arts in the Parks, Recreation and Cultural part of the city's master plan and partner with the Cultural Events and Services Division, Department of Parks, Recreation and Culture, to recognize the contributions and heritage of the city's population and recognize that the two committees need to support each other and find ways in which cultural arts can address racism and unify the community. And next slide. And these are our goals for fiscal year 2022. First, expand membership to include people from a still broader range of cultures. Second, support the city's efforts to infuse diversity into excellent city programs such as Jingle Jubilee, the Gaithersburg Book Festival, the Labor Day Parade, and Summerfest. Third, continue to provide programming for the diverse population of Gaithersburg and inspire appreciation of and respect for cultural differences. And fourth, continue to partner with city committees, Parks, Recreation and Culture, and outside organizations to provide inclusive programs, reach more community members and promote understanding, respect, and appreciation of the many cultures that call Gaithersburg home. Next slide and next at last, please. The next at last is, thank you, the Multicultural Affairs Committee welcomes comments and questions, preferably easy ones.
Thank you very much, Ken. And Dorothy, thank you for stepping in, beginning to get this presentation started. And Ken, thank you very much to all of your colleagues on the committee. This is important work. Just like the other committees tonight, it has a direct relevance to expressing what it is, what it is and who we are in Gaithersburg. And it also plays a role, I think, in in making each of the different, many, many cultures in the city of Gaithersburg feel valued. And that's important, too. So I think, I think I'm only really scratching the surface of of the important type of rules that Multicultural Affairs Committee plays, and we really appreciate it. It's good work and you guys, and you in particular, for a while. And so some of your colleagues have been at it for a while and we appreciate it. Do we have any other, any questions or comments from the council? Neil Harris.
So first of all, thanks for the presentation. And as the mayor said, thanks so much for the hard work that your committee does. You guys are very busy. Do many projects. And hopefully, as COVID lets up, you'll get to do more that you like to do. I just really wanted to give a shout out, especially for the Day of the Dead exhibit that was set up at the at Borah Park, at the Activity Center. I had a good look at that. Somebody, maybe it was you, Ken, but somebody gave me a good look at it and introduced me to the group that put it together. And I thought it was really spectacular. It was really a remarkable exhibit with amazing details. And I love the explanation of the significance of many of them from a culture that I wasn't really that familiar with. So keep doing things like that. It was great. I learned a lot.
Thank you.
I agree. That was a really terrific display. I'm gonna turn it over to Ryan Spiegel.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to say, sort of in follow-up to what Neil was pointing out, for all of our advisory committees, there's sort of a policy component and a programmatic component. And this committee, which I was fortunate to serve as liaison for a couple of years ago, I mean, this committee sometimes, you know, without, you know, a full complement of members filling out all of the seats on the committee, does an incredible job on the programmatic side. I mean, you guys put together these great events, and of course, with the great support of Dorothy and staff, you just put together incredible events. And each year, you seem to sort of top yourselves from the previous year. Just when you think you can't do anymore with the great cultural events we have to celebrate all the different cultures in the city. So please keep it up. Ken, it's been a pleasure to work closely with you on a lot of these things over the years and I'll continue to be a strong supporter of the work of the MAC and looking forward to getting some additional members on the committee in the coming years, hopefully, and just keeping up the good work and continuing to surprise us each year.
Okay, we will surely try.
Any other questions or comments? Lisa Anderson, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you. I have never been a part of an outcome that wasn't greater achieved when there's different voices, different cultures, different ethnicities that are a part of bringing that outcome together. So thank you to MAC for helping us achieve that. Thank you. It's very important that we do this. And at the Jingle Jangle, it was fantastic, the different cultures that came on the stage. So congratulations to the work that you do. And I'm looking forward to all the future programming coming up. Thank you.
I totally endorse the name Jingle Jangle.
Just add that over the years that I've been on the committee, the city has worked hard to bring more diverse people into some of its events, and it has succeeded to quite a degree. I'm very happy to see that. Our whole committee is happy to see that.
Thank you, Ken. We'll go to Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. And I too will endorse Jingle Jangle as the as the title going forward. Ken, it's good to see you again, Dorothy. It's nice to meet you. Thank you for all of the work. Thank you for the report. You know, I think it's important, you know, we talk a lot about how Gaithersburg is the most diverse small city in the country. But I think we need to really stop and take a minute to understand what that means. I mean, there are a lot of diverse cities in a lot of very urban places around this country. And so that is not a small distinction. And I think, you know, we were talking about being able to tell the history of Gaithersburg earlier in this evening. And, you know, that diversity is part of that history as people bring their cultures here. And that becomes, you know, part of the fabric that makes Gaithersburg great. And I would encourage, you know, more people to get involved and help tell those stories. I mean, one of the first events that I ever attended in Gaithersburg, when my family moved here in 2009, was the Powwow with our small children at the time. And that was a tremendous event. It was such a disappointment that that it couldn't be held this year. But just to be able to share in that event and to understand how important that is in the culture and to be able to tell these kinds of stories is wonderful. So the more stories that we can tell, the more we can highlight the people that make Gaithersburg great. And I'm excited to see what comes in 2022. So thank you.
You are welcome.
All right. So I will open it up. If there's anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this, just use the Zoom raise hand function. And we will go once, go twice. I don't, I don't see anybody raising their hand here. So then I want to thank Dorothy and Ken once again for the presentation tonight. And this being the final item on our agenda, I will note again, I'll remind everybody, we do not have a meeting next week on the 20th, nor on the 27th, due to the holidays. So the next regular meeting of the mayor council will be on Monday, January 3rd. This is the time I kind of, I especially miss our colleague Mike Sesma, because every every holiday season, he'd rattle off, he'd wish everyone a happy this and that and this and that, and he'd rattle, he had this whole list. I'm gonna do my best, you know, everyone, Hanukkah passed, so I hope everyone had a happy Hanukkah. But I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas. What else would be? Winter solstice, Festivus, Kwanzaa. He had a whole litany of holidays. And needless to say, we all wish you all happy, whatever you celebrate, and wish everyone a healthy, safe, prosperous 2022 coming up. Happy New Year. And with that, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.